We'd like to welcome everybody to our workshop. This is October, what?
Tenth?
Tenth? Ten o'clock? We'll start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let me start by introducing everybody. We've got Administrator Schroeder to my far left, Commissioner Huxley. I'm Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Weiss, Council Huddle, and John Jesuit, our Administrative Assistant. So let's get started with the agenda. Does anybody have any amendments to the agenda?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair? I would like to just add a discussion of the next three months' calendar for County Board meetings.
County Board what?
Meetings.
Oh, thank you.
Meeting schedule.
Any other amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll motion to approve the agenda as amended, Chair.
A second?
A second, Madam Chair, thank you.
Call for the question?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we're gonna start with the Ferry Hole Boat Ramp. I guess that was, is that the actual name of that, or?
Bagdell Ferry.
The old Bagdell Ferry, yeah.
The only reason I'm asking that is because I noticed there were a lot of holes in the ramps. I didn't know whether you changed the name. Okay, so Administrator Schroeder, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, yeah, so. The county has received an invoice for $750 from the State Department of Land, and that's in your packet in online. This is a permit for the boat ramp on the North Rogue River, about four miles up the road. Permit is good for 15 years. The discussion point for the county board is after inspecting this boat ramp, it is found to be in need of significant repair. In your packet, you will find pictures of the site along with a survey and a general map of the location. Richard Christensen Roadmaster visited the site, looked at the concrete ramp, said it would need a ton of work, in his words, and we needed to work in the river, permits would be needed, obviously, to work in a protected waterway. One of the neighbors does keep a logbook of the people that use the boat ramp. I've looked at it, I've gone up there and talked to her. Due to the limited parking, maybe they get anywhere from one to four people using it per day. One of the limiting factors of that property is there's a, it's only .33 acres of county land on the river that we own, and that limits it to three vehicles, more or less, that can park at one time. I've discussed this with department head, with our department head meetings. We have a couple different options that the county board can consider and direct staff to do further research or investigation to bring back with recommendation for action. One is leave as is. One, put up a sign warning of a dangerous ramp. Two, three, put in road barriers to limit the ramp to canoes or kayaks. Four, remove the ramp, don't pay the fee, sell the property to the budding homeowners. And five, investigate cost of repair and replacement of the ramps. So with that, I'll go through a couple, I'll go through a couple different pictures here. So this is the Bagdell Ferry Boat Ramp, and as you can tell from the historical site, it was in operation 1872 until 1932. This is a picture of the ramp looking down into the water. So you can see we have what used to be, you know, a continuous slab of concrete is now broken up into, you know, multiple different pieces, and it dives into the river very significantly after you get to this point here. It really goes down, down steeply.
So let me just ask this quick question. What is our liability if someone were to get injured or whatever? Our land?
Well, that'll be our, one of our discussion points. I just have a few pictures here to go through. So you get kind of the condition of it.
Please finish.
So you can see, you know, there's some issues here. This is a parking area. Again, we're going back to the survey, it's a third of an acre of total land, that includes a slope that goes down into there. So the land that's actually available for parking is just what you see here. This is, this is a view looking down the road. So when you look in the survey map, this area here is a county road. So that's listed as county property and the road, and these two property owners here, you know, have a butt to it. Here's a overview map, so you can see here again, this would be county property and county road going down to here, and then this is the, this is county property, the third of an acre, and just this top portion up here is available for parking. And there it shows again what it, what it looks like on the property viewing site, from the GIS program. So, some of the questions that have come up would should be, you know, what is our liability? So I have talked to the individual who lives next door to there. He, he actually owns a Chevron dealer here, and you can see from the earlier map that he keeps a wrecker out there. He says occasionally people will, their, the wheels off the trailers would break off. If you go down too far and you don't know the property well, you pull back out, the wheels get caught, and then they have a problem with that. So far, we haven't had any, to my knowledge, the county hasn't had any claims that have kind of across the county. But this is a registered boat ramp, and, you know, so outer towners could use it and not be aware of it. We haven't, that's about the extent of the investigation that we've done. We haven't got any estimates as far as, you know, what it take, what would it take to repair it, what would be the ramifications if we slightly closed it and paid the permit or other things. So that's where our staff is at, and I'm just looking for what kind of thoughts the county board has for concerning the use of this particular county property.
Could we charge for the use of the ramp? Those people who are using it? I know we couldn't have someone standing there all day, but I know other places put a little box or whatever for people to pay.
That would be one thing the county could do. You could put up a little pay box, and people could, you know, just like we do up at the parks, you could have a self-pay box with an envelope, and then you put a little thing on your windshield.
Mr. Weiss?
Can we hear from Mr. Hopkins before we have questions? And then, yeah, I have several questions, maybe some comments. I know he's spent some time on this.
Josh?
Josh Hopkins, Curry County Parks. So yeah, pretty much everything County Administrator was talking about as far as the condition of the boat ramp, it's in very poor shape. I have not heard that the county has had any claims against them for liability, but I kind of feel like having this discussion right now opens that door, because now it's gonna be something the public thinks about when they break their boat trailers. As far as it goes though, with the fee boxes, we could put in an Iron Ranger, that's what it's called, it's a fee box for it, we could charge a fee for it. I think you're gonna be hard pressed to get people to pay for something in its current condition without fixing it, and to fix it, from speaking with Marine Board, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars probably. Because not only are we gonna have to fix it, we're gonna have to bring it up to the current boat launch standards. The Marine Board, when I spoke to him, mentioned that we'd end up having to regrade the road, widen the road, and widen the launch itself, which would take away from the parking that's already there, and that's limited.
So what are your suggestions or your recommendations?
I would recommend that we at least post it in some form or fashion, and hopefully the wording alone is able to mitigate the county's liability. If that's not enough, then we're left with the option of barricading it as well. I would prefer if we go the barricade route to use some form of gate. My main concern would be search and rescue purposes. One of the big things for this boat launch, it's the only, like, actual boat launch that's not a gravel bar between the port and Lobster Creek Forestry Campground. So as far as search and rescue purposes, if there was an event that came up in that section of the river, that's where they'd go. So that's why I'd prefer some form of gate to where sheriff can have a key to it, and it also opens up having a key to the gate for ODFW, for if they need to do it, for spring Chinook stuff and any of that type of thing. All the different entities involved with this boat launch, ODFW, Marine Board, DSL, no one's really against the idea of removing the ramp. That comes along with its own cost. We'd end up having to get a permit through DSL, and it's a joint permit with the Army Corps of Engineers. The permit itself is anywhere between $700 to $1,000 just for the permit to remove it, and then we'd have the removal cost as well. So when you look at it like that, we're stuck with a $700-plus bill whether we pay this public license fee and leave it, or remove it anyways. But yeah, I think at least posting it to give warning and try and mitigate the county's liability.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several things I want to offer on this. The history there alone is very noteworthy. My uncle used to tell me the story about Herbert Hoover came in there in 1929, '30, right around in there, and there was about 20 cars ahead of him, and he made the plea, his people did, that could you, because it was a one-car ferry, one at a time before the bridge was built, completed in '32. And so he wanted to know if he could go ahead, when they found, when Arnold Bagdell found out it was Herbert Hoover, he basically said, "You can wait in line with everybody else, your turn." So that's a story we used to tell once in a while. Somebody's gotta stick up for the guides here. This is a popular guides boat ramp, and sure, we would, we need to be very careful of liability. My option, preference, based on the information I have right now, would be to post that there is a liability here. The option of having the kayakers and canoeers limited or a gate, I do not want to barricade it. I will be in fierce opposition to that as it stands right now, on the assumption we could have that sign that suggests the difficulty in this ramp. I don't agree there'd be thousands and thousands of dollars. It is a major project, and I really appreciate Mr. Hopkins' work you've done there. It is the only boat ramp on the north side between Gold Beach, actually between Jodds, or if you want to include Lex's Landing or the old mailboat launch. It's the only one till you get to Foster Bar, which is 41 miles up. Yeah, well, unless you want to do the Agnes across the Illinois River, and that's not an official boat ramp, but people use it a lot. New Zealand, places like that, they just drop off, big boats, small boats, gravel bars, and so the guides are accustomed to this. The only other thing I would add, Madam Chair, to your point, I think on a honor system, I think most of the people would pay something. And I had mentioned to you, we might be able to get the ODFW or the Marine Board to at least, early on, offer that payment, or, excuse me, offer that system like they have in Jackson County, and surprisingly, they do pretty well. And no, they don't have full-time monitors. The reason I don't want to ever see it limited to just kayakers and canoeers is because they don't pay any of the facility fees that the Marine Board works for, facility improvements. That all comes from motorized boats on their annual, bi-annual fees that they pay. Kayakers, and when I served on the Marine Board, we took that subject to just a discussion level, and we almost got ran out of town by the rafters and kayakers, even on a, the float groups that I'm pretty familiar with, I'm paying just a little bit because they use these facilities. Important to note, the guides, the motorized boaters, they pay for all the facilities in Oregon through the Marine Board system. So the options, yeah, I'm with you and your recommendation as one of the three or four options, to post it and buy us some time, and we might even run that in conjunction with spend a little more time and investigate the cost and repair of something that would be adequate at least for a few years, that would show that we are trying to protect that boat ramp and hopefully keep it, keep it in existence. It is very important to our guide industry and our visitors' promotion, the whole travel.
Does the Marine Board ever offer grants, so that we could use a grant towards fixing this thing?
Yes. So since Commissioner Weiss brought it up with the Marine Board, good to note that they are working on current legislation. It's in the process to add a fee onto canoes, kayaks, everything like that as part of the invasive species permit, and the idea is that's gonna end up creating a whole sum of money for people to use for, like, kayak facility-type stuff. So that's kind of a cool thing going on.
I would just be very surprised, even 10 years later, 20 years later, that it would get any public support. Maybe.
Yeah. But as far as the Marine Board grants go, currently, one thing we have up at Boy's Cove is our MAP grant funding. A lot of different agencies have the same type of thing. The Marine Board pays part of our cost operating the facility up there. This does not fall under the guidelines for that, because it doesn't have the necessary amount of parking spaces, nor does it have a permanent restroom facility. When it comes to the Marine Board grants, they're a set pool of money, there's priorities placed on them. One of the main things they've done to decide where to rank those priorities is use parking spaces available for boat and trailer. This current project would fall under its facility grant to repair it. It'd be a 20%, 25% match from the county to go that route three to five years, and it would be considered an extremely low priority by the Marine Board due to the fact that it's got such limited parking available. When I was speaking with the Marine Board about it, they mentioned that even after the three-to-five-year process, it's very possible they would run out of the grant funds before even getting to this project on the list because of its low priority. So with that being said, there's really not a path forward currently through the Marine Board that's viable, and I haven't found anything from anyone else. When I was speaking with the Army Corps of Engineers, they mentioned there may be some funding from the EPA to remove it, because they think that removing it would have been better for the ecological area or something like that. But I haven't had a chance to run that down.
So you think a grant is the best possible option? Okay.
A grant would be if there was one available, but currently, there's not, and the real question to the county would be, how much do you want to spend as a match for a facility that currently doesn't make us any profit or revenue?
Mr. Weiss?
Just one more thing. I just want to clarify and add that because of what I offered regarding the difference between the motorized and the non-motorized use, I still want to see, as it relates to our travel marketing, that that is also open to the non-motorized use, and so they know that that is, it is, it is one access you have in the distance that I outlined there. So I'm not against, you know, the non-motorized, of course. To the contrary, that's all.
I'd kind of like to see a sign along with some sort of a collection box there.
You know, we could put up a collection box. I don't know how much we'd end up getting or what the rules are for how much we could charge. Currently at Boy's Cove, we charge $2 for our day-use area, but that's due to restrictions with our MAP funding and stuff like that. If this one's not involved in that, we might be able to charge more, but I still.
I was thinking more like $10.
Yeah, I mean, I, Port Brookings Harbor, I think it's $5 to launch out of there for, like, a kayak and stuff like that. I just think you're not gonna end up collecting a lot, and it'll be more of a staff time that doesn't quite match out. Yum-ohs are only $0.25 a pop.
Mr. Weiss?
What is your stats and history, Weiss Cove? Do you have, do you get fairly good participation there, or is it?
We do, but that's because we've got BLM, state parks, an entire lake, the ocean, and everything else, all in one area, and we have international travelers. We'll end up with several hundred people a day during July, August, coming to Boy's Cove's day-use area because of all the other recreational activities. You're not gonna get that there. I think really, if you got down to the numbers of it, you're gonna find you have a dozen or so fishing guides that use it on a daily basis or something like that, but the majority of people aren't using this facility.
So.
You wouldn't even know it's there from the road.
You have, Administrator Schroeder, you have the homeowner's tally or daily description of people using the facility? Do you have that available, or?
I took a couple photographs of it, and I could, I could show it to you. I didn't put it up there because it's got people's license numbers and stuff like that, but I can show it to you, yeah. I just took a few. She has, like, multiple triggering binders. Every day, she's keeping track of who's up there.
So we want to be careful with the information, I realize, but that's good data, and in comparison to, you said, the hundreds that use the facility in North County, that helps me understand. Thank you. The difference, the ratio.
Like a rain gauge, right? Commissioner Huxley?
What's, I can't really make it out on that GIS. What's the, but what's the appraised value of the property? Is that $5,000?
It says $5,000. Current exempt value is $5,000.
Okay, so it is $5,000. And?
And that's, and that's just for this third of an acre piece of property here.
Correct.
This, you know, if the county board considered jettisoning the property, this other whole property would be a vacation of a road.
That was gonna be my next question.
In the same aspect, as we're dealing with next week, up in Flores Lake area, there's a vacation of a road that we're dealing with, public hearing and everything like that, and you're, you'll see that next week as a part of that process. It's a different process.
You mentioned several times, you know, that, right, I was interpreting that the neighbors would be interested in possibly purchasing? I mean, has that question been asked, or has that offer been, been made in discussions, or is this assumed hypothetical?
I talked, I talked to them in general terms, and I said if the county board wanted to consider that, and they, they obviously would have some concerns on it, because you have basically this property owned by the county, and you have three property owners. How would you divide up this property? How would you keep people from doing stuff? They basically would just be interested in talking if we wanted to talk about that.
I would suggest at least, you know, asking them, are you, you know, are you really interested? Because you could, what you could do as a condition of the sale of the property, in short order, you're gonna spend, we probably already have, certainly more than the properties and everything is worth, forget the liability. If you start posting signs or putting in something to spend $10 to collect $2 or something ridiculous like that, the government could do that. They could spend $100 to collect $2. They, they, I think they're, they do it all the time. But if you could, if the property could be, and then there would be a live, I think you'd increase your liability if you start posting things or charging money for somebody. I think you've, you, I'm not a lawyer, but to me, that would increase the liability of the county if they thought they didn't have any now. I think they sure have something, some liability if they start charging peanuts to launch, launch a boat and lose, you know, the tires on their trailer or something. But I would suggest at least seeing if they're interested, and certainly if that property could be sold, it could be conditioned on whatever you can imagine. You know, you can certainly request in conditions in the sale of a property, that it be open, that the law enforcement have access, that A, B, C, D, and so forth and so on, as a condition of the sale. And remove a continued, I don't see it as an asset, you know, I see it more as a future cost of liability, so.
Administrator Schroeder?
Council Huddle?
Yes.
Do you feel in the current condition where we really don't have any type of warning on there, do you think there's any county liability for damaged vehicles, or is it assumed that you're using a ramp at your own risk?
The standard would be if there's an open and obvious hazard, that people are usually responsible for their own actions in those circumstances, but I would prefer that we at least post a sign saying, you know.
Use it at your own risk?
Ramp, you know, use it at your own risk. Also, Oregon law allows what's called recreational immunity, if you allow someone free use of a property for recreation, and we may be able to invoke that if someone makes a claim against us if we don't charge, and it sounds like the type of charging we're doing wouldn't really cover our expenses. So I, I think we should postpone any charging until we get this ramp repaired if we go that route. But I think at a minimum, post a sign, closing it off with the, with the gate accessible to sheriff would make, you know, the, from a risk management standpoint, some of the most sense. But again, we've heard, you know, there's been commercial users and other public users that would be then deprived of this, so that's a policy choice for the board.
Could we go back a couple slides to the history marker there? Yeah, I just think that has tremendous significance. I understand the recreational immunity, or at least I'm learning a little bit about that, because Oregon's been hit pretty hard lately. But no, I, I hear gate though, and I, I'm, again, I'm gonna be in strong opposition to that. Our guides have enough difficulty trying to survive through the wintertime, and so this is very important to several of them. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Oh, except maybe we could build on this, this historical part of it on our property, and just, just make that a, almost a destination, and maybe a picnic area where, I understand the parking, it's too bad we don't have extra and additional land there available.
Okay.
I would say at a minimum, a warning sign.
Same here.
Okay, well, I have some information.
And maybe check about buying the property too, just to see.
Okay, that, like I said, is a workshop. I'm just looking for the thoughts of the commissioners, and we'll continue to work on this and staff and come back to you.
Okay, thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our tobacco business license discussion. Clark Schroeder to begin with.
Okay, so we've been asked by Ms. Weiss to have a discussion if the county board would be interested in developing a tobacco retail license for people in Curry County. A tobacco retail license would be an effective tool used by communities to ensure retailers comply with safe and responsible tobacco retail practices. And so with that, I'll pass it off to Ms. Weiss from CCH.
Hi, good morning. So just a little bit of background, why the retail environment is so important to.
Can you introduce your title and what you do?
Brooklyn Weiss with Curry Community Health. I am the Tobacco Prevention Coordinator. So yeah, a little bit of background for the retail environment. The majority of smokers do start before the age of 18, so youth are especially vulnerable to tobacco retail tactics, especially with these new products coming about, like e-cigarettes and jewels are becoming very popular, different vaping devices. And then these, the e-juices for the vaping devices, as well as other tobacco products like little cigars come in very youth-friendly flavors, like strawberry, or snickerdoodle, or chocolate. And then, if you noticed in your packet, this is a problem affecting Curry County. We have, from the Oregon Health Authority's 2017 Healthy Teen Survey, 7.4% of 11th graders in Curry County said that they smoked a cigarette in the past 30 days. 12.5% of 11th graders in Curry County used any tobacco products, including vaping products in the past 30 days. And 50.6% of 11th graders in Curry County had seen an advertisement promoting tobacco or vaping products in a storefront in the past 30 days. This is significant because kids not only are noticing these products being promoted, but they are using them. And a tobacco retail license is one of the ways that we can help protect youth. At the very least, it would provide a way to enforce sales to minors. And then it could also be builded, built upon to do other things like control more of the retail environment. A lot of counties are banning flavors or they are restricting different promotional things that tobacco industry is using. And so I'm here today mostly just to see how feasible a tobacco retail license is and who would need to be involved in getting that kind of started and getting that implemented. A little bit more about the retail license. The main elements include the fees, which would ideally be sufficient enough to provide for the cost of the license administering it and enforcing, doing enforcement. And then the administering, obviously, and the monitoring and the enforcement, choosing those agencies, who would do it, how often, that kind of a thing. Any questions about a tobacco retail license?
Well, I have a couple of questions. One was on the advertising. They're okay with doing all this advertising on the vaping and cigarettes on the storefronts? That's not against the law, I take it?
No.
Okay, and then the second question is, I was reading through your packet and I noticed the county, I guess it was Kalamath?
Yeah.
That instituted this, were not able to take care of their costs because of the licensing. And not only that, they had a much higher rate of teens using tobacco than we do. So, those were the two things I noticed, so. I, I'm, our county is strapped for money.
Yeah.
So I would be reticent to institute anything like this. And I'm totally against smoking, don't get me wrong. But again, something that would cost the county a lot of money to enforce because we're running into some of these problems with people's trash and so forth that we're having to enforce currently.
Yeah, that's why ideally the fee of the license that business owners would pay in order to sell tobacco, that fee ideally would be sufficient to cover the cost of everything else. Yeah.
How many businesses sell tobacco in Curry County?
There are approximately 26. That number could be different because we don't currently have a way to know exactly who is and who is not selling tobacco. That's another reason why the tobacco retail license would be important is so that we know who is selling tobacco in the county specifically, so that we can keep a better eye on whether or not they're selling to minors.
What would be your goal of enacting a business license? What would your outcome hopefully be?
The main outcome is to reduce sales to minors. In the most recent enforcement inspection, 11 retailers in Curry County were inspected and two of them did make sales to minors. I don't know if you want to.
So who did the inspecting?
This was done by the Oregon Health Authority.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do they come around how often, the Oregon Health Authority?
They do it yearly, the enforcement inspections.
Okay, and so if we were to have licenses, business licenses for all these tobacco folks, how often would we have to inspect?
That's up to you. That, that's the thing about the tobacco retail license is you can really make it what you want and ideally at least every retailer would be inspected at least once a year. The recommendation is twice a year for every retailer, but a lot of counties do find that hard to do financially.
So we would have to hire another person, I would think, to?
Yeah, some counties are.
Part-time at least.
Yeah, it could be, I don't know if any departments currently have a position. I mean, only 26 retailers isn't too much, it shouldn't take up too much time. So it could be, you know, you could designate a department that would kind of take over this. You could contract out to law enforcement specifically for the enforcement piece.
But that's what the, the license fees would be for?
Yeah, yeah.
So going back to, I, I hear what your outcome is, is to limit or decrease youth underage smoking. You're gonna regulate the tobacco sellers to, to get there. What kind of regulations do you think would limit youth access to tobacco?
Some of the ones that are most popular in Oregon are, that people are working towards are the banning of flavors because, you know, obviously kids are very attracted to sweet flavors like strawberry or chocolate. And these are very tempting to youth who are, yeah, curious about tobacco use. And so that's one of the big things that's happening also. Just with the new T-21 law that you have to now be 21 years or older to purchase tobacco, the state is really curious to see how effective that really is and that it's missing that enforcement piece when they can, they're so limited in their scope that they can't, you know, obviously monitor all of the retailers in every county.
Mr. Boyce?
Wonder if Mr. Cannon, Curry Community Health has also, Curry Community Health has anything to add to this? Great presentation, don't leave, by the way.
Yeah.
Just more to some of those points, I think that we are small and we do have very, you know, we have minimal retailers and to some of Mrs.'s points, it really isn't a, a big burden. Like I said, 26 retailers or potentially more, maybe a handful more. In, in many states and many counties and jurisdictions.
You need to put the mic up.
Get that tall one there.
Yeah.
On your right.
Oh, this one right here. The, it is found to be effective to at least have some kind of local administration looking at licensing, looking at if they're, they're following the rules as far as selling to minors, which is now, as was mentioned, 21. So you need to be 21 to purchase that tobacco. We really just don't have any solid information or intel on how this is happening in our county. We haven't had any oversight on it and so we don't know what's happening. Another strategy, which is, you know, I think further down the road or something that could be looked at is proximity. There are also options for limiting proximity to certain facilities. So for example, not having a tobacco retail establishment, you know, so many yards or miles from a school or from a park or whatnot. That also helps with the sale to minors and.
So do you know how many counties have banned the, the flavored tobaccos?
I don't know. Do you, do you know that one?
No, that's really big in California right now, in Oregon.
That explains everything.
In Oregon, I don't have a specific number.
Because I was just wondering how effective that was.
Yeah.
No, these are good, great questions and, and we're, we're trying to explore options and see what, you know, readiness is or willingness to explore some of these options.
And it would be interesting to know how much of the flavored stuff is actually sold because theoretically only those people who are 21 or older could buy the flavored stuff, so.
Right.
Of course, maybe they're getting it for their kids, who knows? Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Initially, I'm, I'm in favor of this because it's, we're becoming for kids more and more of a permissive society and there's a cycle here that, you know, we're all aware of, we need to learn more about, you know, mental health issues are one of the biggest issues we're dealing with. It's just expanding and, you know, I'd be interested just to know, for example, statistics on how many kids start nicotine and then go to marijuana or, or whatever the case may be. And so we eventually evolve to where, you know, the counties, cities, state, everybody has to deal with this and try and, and help those people overcome. And that's expensive. So this, this is one example, at least initially I, I think that, to be honest with you, I didn't read the California statistics, I intend to, and I think there's potentially some very good data there. But it's, it's, it's almost a deal where you can pay me now or you can pay me later. So if we're able to tell kids, this is not a good idea. Or if, if you go into a store, you're gonna be monitored a little bit, so you better be careful, may even prohibit you from going in, which, bye for your buddies, whatever. So, yeah, very good presentation. I think, I think it might be an answer to combat back, push back a little bit on, on what we're telling kids is, is, is acceptable. So thank you.
Commissioner Huxley?
I, I did read this very thoroughly and it's a California template. Change Lab Solutions has done one template that's, you know, then there, there's a link to their site. My first and still is my reaction, it's government gone wild. We don't need more government, okay? And cost-wise, the, again, there was the fees that were shown here, the numbers I think were in these test results or not test results in this report. Went back to 2012 and the nine entities, some were county or a portion of a county, someone might have been a city, it was a very miniscule amount. These were Oregon, that I mentioned, these nine entities in this report. And the study or the interviews, I think there were five or seven, seven interviews that were done in 2012. So this is six-year-old, you know, data that's there. But in, in all cases, no one had really done much of anything because it was so overwhelming. The, the budget, budgeting for a local tobacco retailer license fee in California, basically a checklist of, that was done by this Change Lab Solutions as far as things you would need. There were 30, was it, 30 items in five pages? Yeah. And it went into staff, I mean, it was very thorough. If money was no object or if it wasn't your money, it was no problem. If it was your money, it would be a quick trip to financial disaster, especially based on the economics. The fees that were shown to be charged clearly didn't nearly cover the cost. When you take, you mentioned 26, I think the numbers in these other locations varied from nine to, my memory, it's in here, about 140 some retail establishments. When you went through just the, the hours, I noted on each one of these 30 items, how many hours are we talking about? Because in order to establish these things, it doesn't matter in some, many cases whether it's for one retailer or 100 retailers in order to set up the data system. I mean, it, I won't even go into reading this stuff, it was so onerous, you know, I mean, again, a great checklist if money is no object on it. When you took the 26 and multiplied it times the, and again, these are 2012 figures, I'm assuming also, times about 75 or I think it was $43, you know? But let's just say the high end was 75 per year.
1950.
You know, it's under $2,000. You could spend, and I'm not gonna exaggerate here, I think you could spend 20, 30,000 or more dollars just to easily, to just set up if you tried to reasonably follow. And I say reasonably, not, you know, across every T, dot every I, but tens of thousands of dollars and, and still get, get nowhere. After that five pages, it went into, again, some of them, the ordinances, you know, or the ordinance templates in order to make it effectively law, you know? And again, the, really the follow-up on the interviews said it all, we don't, nobody's doing anything on this, honestly, nobody did, or little to nothing. And the annual, again, this is 2012, you know, initial, oh, and then they get into, you know, you mentioned to go out and inspect two times a year. This is with decoys. They were very specific in here. You have to hire child, I'll call them child, probably certainly under 20, I would think, decoys. You have to have chaperones, you have to have meals, you have to have training, you have to have this, you have to have that, on and on and on and on for, and $2,000 per year if, if these things are used. You, you would, it would be a, a money hole on it, literally, of not just a few thousand dollars, but tens and tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars. So I don't.
Point of order, Madam Chair, this is going on 10 minutes.
I still have the, I still have the floor.
Yes, he does have the floor.
The word you used last meeting was pontificating, so.
That's enough.
I still have the chair, I, I still have the floor.
Yeah. He's going over the report.
Okay. Clearly, I don't think, you know, perhaps all the commissioners read the report as thoroughly as I did, but I'd say I, I just don't. I just don't see it as anything other than government and, you know, making more government jobs. I think that's, that's all, that's all this would do.
So in this, in this workshop, if I may, excuse me?
Commissioner Boyce?
In this workshop, what would our solution be then? If we, I, I did assume, Mr. Cannon, that the CCOs would be doing the inspecting or similar to, did I, did I have that incorrect?
They certainly can be involved and they're a key partner in this work.
Okay, but right now, the way this would, would stand, the county would have that responsibility?
That, it depends on how we want to structure it. Yes, the, the county would ultimately have that authority, but as was mentioned, there can be contracts made or contributions made from CCOs, from nonprofit organizations. It can be structured how we desire.
Yeah, I just, I just, Madam Chair, I just don't see a better solution than to, again, initially to, to walk away and not recognize this problem. It, it brings much bigger problems at an accelerated rate and we see that around us everywhere in our county, everywhere in Oregon.
I don't think it's a matter of not recognizing the problem. I think it's a matter of coming up with a solution that best fits our financial resources and, and ability to, to take care of it. So if we got into a program such as the California one, sounds pretty detailed and very expensive to, to put together. So what is your recommendation? The California model or?
I think that that's certainly one of the more comprehensive, as you mentioned, approaches. We could look at other options and certainly to the point of cost, it, it is a cost. It is an investment, I think more of it like as an investment in the future of our citizens. Yes, there are costs and personnel costs and, and all, you know, the, the costs that Commissioner Huxley mentioned. In public health, we talk about the years of potential life lost. It is a, a metric that we look at and the, the burden of tobacco on our citizens is, is quite high. And we, what we, we say, we, we lose a lot of potential years through tobacco. And that is an economic burden, it is a mental health, emotional type burden on our citizens and it is quantifiable, that, that cost.
So question, I'm going back to finances, always back to finances. Is Curry Community Health willing to put forth money towards this project?
I certainly, we are invested in the project and, and yes, we would be at the table and willing to contribute. I can't make that determination though, you know, for the organization.
Mr. Schroeder?
I, I have a question for Council Huddle. If we enacted an ordinance that, established a business license for tobacco, could we basically in the ordinance dictate that the enforcement action, the enforcement of this ordinance would be the sole responsibility of a subcontractor such as CCH, so there would be no cost to the county?
Off top of your head? It's a good question. We're actually in discussion with CCH right now about enforcement of any of the other health codes that we have and they've taken a position that they, that enforcement is a government function that we can't contract out. Now that's under our community or, um, local public health duties under the state statutory scheme. I, I don't even know where this would fall under that. Is this part, are you seeing this as part of our local public health authority, um, powers or what, or just as our general police powers of a county? Um, this is a revenue raising idea. Usually business licenses are for revenue raising. Um, and, and so again, uh, there's a, there's a lot of pieces to it, but, um, there's, there's been some, you know, discussion again with CCH over whether they can enforce any of our, you know, any of our rules and laws. So I, I would have, I'd have to, you know, work with them on that, but it, I'm questioning whether it's allowed depending on whether it's a government's function or not.
I would say there'd have to be some sort of contract ahead of time with an understanding of who's going to be in charge of what.
Yeah, I, i- if I were organizing it, it would just be get financial contribution from CCH to fund our enforcement efforts if we did them. But, um, and, you know, if we have 26 retailers and we charge a thousand bucks a license, that's $26,000, which would go to pain for part of an enforcement officer. Um, but, uh, yeah, we have, we have plenty of enforcement to do and we don't have a good history of doing enforcement. So, um, and we're just starting our program. The one issue I have is just volume. I mean, how, we're having a hard time keeping up with the, with the number of enforcement cases we already have and this would just add, add to that. Um, so that's, those are just some of the, the issues. And, um, the other question I had, if I could?
You bet.
Um, we mentioned the state has passed a 21, now you have to be 21. I've never been involved in it. I think when I was at a different jurisdiction, our local law enforcement cooperated with OLCC, for instance, in doing these underage things. Um, but primarily OLCC themselves had the enforcement officer and that was all OLCC's work to do. Um, a- and so they ran all the enforcement. Uh, who is enforcing tobacco laws in general at the state level? And don't they have a mechanism in place to enforce this under 21 law or over 21 law like OLCC has for liquor? I mean, what's, how does that work right now? How's it working right now? Or did they set up something to do that when they passed the new law?
That's a great question. Uh, like the OLCC, that there isn't a, a tobacco organization, if you will, that, uh, would do that type of enforcement. I do believe that falls on law enforcement, but it is not on a, because there is no business license, there's, it's not enforced on that license level. It's enforced at the citizen level. So...
Okay.
It would be possession.
So, so if someone's selling tobacco right now, they don't need a license from the state to be a tobacco retailer?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Huxley?
Now, that was addressed specifically in here, that there is no license currently required just for retail sales of tobacco.
Correct.
There's oversight, like you mentioned, the, the random inspection or inspection, you know, per year of, of that, but...
I think, and I, that's a great point. I, I think they're more of a survey than an inspection because there's no enforcement arm on that. They're more intel gathering and understanding how things are working. And OHA was the one that conducted that, that survey. Um, but as, as was mentioned, the, we, we license, uh, alcohol retailers and, and there's a license for that. There's enforcement through the OLCC, but not for tobacco.
I guess the all-encompassing problem we've got here, we set up all these laws and ordinances and so forth, but if there's no enforcement, I mean, they're, they're basically useless.
It's a great point. I mean, the Tobacco 21 is, uh, I, I think it provides a good opportunity and I think it's kind of a foot in the door, but right now there's really not a lot of teeth to that, as you, as you alluded to.
Mr. Boyce?
Public awareness will bear some fruit long-term. We didn't inherit this problem, but we're stuck with responsibility to try and do anything we can to resolve it. If it's 20,000 a year, we, we spent that in attorney fees outside the county, so, or even more than that. So this is about the future. This is about something that I think is justified. The retailers, they'll pass it on, the, the, the cost of doing business. And so that even in itself is going to be less packs sold theoretically, presumably. So, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to pursue this. Obviously, we're not ready to, uh, to weigh in real strong today, but I, I think it'd be wise for us in the interest of the future of the, of the county and our youth and everybody. Again, public awareness that we, uh, we, we pursue this and see if, uh, it is something the county should take a real serious look at. And so, uh, that's my position today.
I don't mind looking at it, but I'd want to know all the financial ramifications before I even move forward. Cause we are between a rock and a hard place, so.
Certainly.
Any other comments?
So basically, the, you know, the consensus of the board is look further into the, this issue, come up with financial ramifications of it and come back for further discussion. Is that kind of a summary of it?
That's, that's fine with me.
Madam Chair, I'll check with, uh, one of the...
It's a consensus of two to one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not, because I think...
Obviously, I understand.
I think Commissioner Boyce, uh, again, goes, made a comment, they'll, the retailers will just pass it along. That is another underlying problem with government involvement in things. It's not their money and all they do is keep passing it along. Ultimately, it, it is in many, many, many cases or most cases passed along to the consumers.
I'm, I'm somewhat familiar with the Oregon Liquor Control Commission and I don't know very many people that think that that is government gone wild. It has been quite a success story in Oregon. I'm not saying that this would be a success story, but, uh, the, uh, the OLCC has tremendous respect and it has, it has addressed the problems that alcohol can bring to our society and it's done very well. I'm not saying it's a perfect organization, but overall, uh, it is, uh, it is earned, earned its merit badges.
Okay, any other discussion on this item? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for your feedback and time.
Okay, we have one last thing on the agenda. It's going to be a short meeting.
Um, I just, I just wanted to highlight this. This is just an interesting email that just came in.
What is that?
We basically, the, the U.S. Geological Survey basically came and we gave them authorization to do core sampling in Flores Lake down to nine meters. And, and they basically sent back that they, uh, they looked at, and these are seven to eight thousand years ago, and these are, uh, within the marshes along the southeast corner of the lake. They found one intriguing coarse sand in a marsh, marsh peat. That could be signs of an older tsunami deposit.
Say that again, please, older tsunami.
Deposit?
Uh, uh, sand tsunami deposit around eight thousand years ago. So they're basically doing, they may, they may come back next summer in order to, they're out, these are guys are out of Santa Cruz and they're going to come back possibly next summer and do some more core samplings. And the goal is to have a scientific research article about this part of, uh, United States tsunami history in 2020. I just thought that was interesting. I, you know, it's one of those things I just wanted to, wanted to share with the board.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just, did you say USGS?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now that might be government gone wild. Can you imagine what that cost? Might have some value. Hard to say.
Okay. Uh, take one of these and pass it on?
Okay, we're going to talk about the calendar next.
Yes.
Yeah, they're all in November then.
Correct. Yes.
There you go.
Okay, with the, um, with the coming holidays and the schedules and, uh, people's vacations and conferences, here's what I'm proposing for meetings for the next three months. Uh, coming up in November, we would be looking at, uh, having a board meeting on the seventh. Uh, the week of the 12th or the 16th, there is the AOC conference. Um, I know me and Commissioner Boyce will be up there. Uh, Council Huddle will also be at the AOC conference and I believe Roadmaster Christensen will also be up there too. So nothing that week. Uh, the week of Thanksgiving, uh, there'll be, uh, Council Huddle is taking that whole week off. I will be taking off part of the 21st, so I'm suggesting that we just have a workshop on the 28th. And if we need to sign or approve some sort of contracts or have an executive session or something, we could also have just a short, uh, board meeting if we have something that needs to be legally signed or approved by the board on the 28th. Brings us into December, so we'd have a full county board meeting on the 5th, workshop on the 12th, and another board meeting on the 19th. And then into January, we would have a meeting on the 2nd. On the Monday, the 7th, the new board would be sworn in. So on the meeting on January 2nd, Commissioner Huxley will be part of that meeting. And, uh, starting on the, after the 7th, a new board member will be sworn in. We'll have a workshop and then the first full county board meeting with the new commissioner will be on the 16th.
So the, the state law says that the term of the new commissioner begins the first Monday in January after the election.
Oh, yeah.
So the newly, new commissioner would, new commissioners, uh, new commissioner would not come in until the 7th, so the existing board would continue until the new board. So...
It just got lost.
The general scheduling, uh, we have a, meetings are the first and the third Wednesdays of every month, so January 2nd is the first Wednesday in January. So, go ahead. So the old board would still be there until the swearing in on the first Monday, which follows that first Wednesday.
There's a little bit of a hitch there. I know usually the first meeting in January, we determine who's the chair and vice chair and all of that. So I guess we could wait until the 3rd, the 16th. Not the end of the world.
Yeah.
Why would you swear in two weeks later?
No, they're being sworn in here.
Cause that's the only Monday available.
No, the first Monday in January is...
It's a statute.
Well, the first Monday.
It's a statute.
So I, I just kind of wanted to bring this to the attention of the board and making sure that, uh, there'll be, the only thing that I, I see coming up that we may have to adjust a little bit on or be a little flexible on would be we're in negotiations, obviously, with the Teamsters 223 and the Teamsters 206 right now. So if those contracts come to fruition or we need more flexibility or guidance from the county board concerning settling these contracts, we may have to convene an executive session meeting just to, uh, deal with labor relations. If we do come to a settlement, we will just bring it to our normal county board meeting. Um, other than that, we'll try to work, we'll try to work with staff around these, uh, this schedule here.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
I think...
Hearing none? Yes.
There was just, I think the only questions you had, which is, you know, to be expected is on the workshops because that's dependent on whether there's anything on there to be discussed.
Yes, yeah. I, I, right now I only have one issue. Uh, there's been a request to have a presentation from a, um, the watershed district and, uh, it's not worth having Charles come up and do that just for, oh, you know, for one 20-minute workshop on that. If, if I can't fit that in anywhere else, I will just tack that on to the end of a regular meeting and just have a presentation, um, so we don't have to, we can save the cost of...
I think that would be more efficient, definitely.
Yeah, so, so unless I have other issues which I, which I want to, you know, have the board weigh in on and give, you know, direction or education, this is, this is the schedule I'm going to shoot for.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not questions, I'm just gonna, you know, I'm going to provide, uh, after the meeting, I'll provide Administrator Schroeder a PDF file marked up of my comments on the, the documents on the tobacco issue. Because I think it's...
Okay.
Again, overwhelming.
Okay. This workshop is adjourned. It is record time.